I get, oh, you can't, okay.
Okay, we're on.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the City Council for the City of Satellite Beach. The date is June 12th, 2012. The time is approximately 5:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming, and thank the council for being here. This is actually pretty short notice to do this. Mr. Carrati, I'll turn it over to you first.
Thank you. At last Wednesday evening's council meeting, staff was directed to proceed with securing applications for interim city manager. Fairly quick turnaround in putting together a request for a proposal. What you have in front of you are applications from 12 individuals in response to the information that was sent to the Florida Today, and also to the members of the Florida City County Management Association's managers in transition list, and the news blast that Kent Small puts out every day from the Florida League of Cities. So there was a quick turnaround time. We have 12 applications, and I think at this point the council has to determine whether you want to interview all 12, which I believe would be cumbersome, versus identifying three, four, or five individuals who are on call to be here tomorrow evening. They were informed that if they were going to be considered an interview, they had to be available tomorrow evening. And we put together a rating sheet, and it is proposed that the council consider rating the applications by selecting your top five. The first choice would get a five, your second choice would get a four, and following in the completion of those rating sheets, the city clerk would tabulate them, and you would have a numerical value signed to all the applicants, and then the council could determine how many you actually want to invite in for your interview tomorrow evening. And then, following that, you may want to have a brief discussion on the type of questions that you would prefer to answer or to ask. We are, are we being broadcast live? No, okay. And so the number of questions, also some procedural questions and some compensation issued questions you'll probably want to discuss either this evening or tomorrow before you sit down with the applicants. So you're reading from the same sheet of music. That's all I have. But it's a turnout for four days.
Yes, it was. We do have 12 applicants. I'll ask the council, you know, this is all new on, you know, there's ways we can do this. Would you like to discuss each 12 applicants come up with a certain number for tomorrow night, and then discuss, I'd like to discuss how you'd like to proceed tomorrow night also.
I'd say, from reading the 12, I read them online, by the way, thanks, Lenore, for sending those out so quickly. I think they stratify pretty, pretty quick. I'm wondering maybe if the technique might not be, go ahead and take a ballot, let's see how we come out, and see if, see if the top five actually break out pretty quick and go from there. If we need to discuss, you know, if we have some that are on the gray line, maybe we can discuss those.
And then we could do those five, and then discuss tomorrow's meeting.
I haven't really, I've looked through some of these. I haven't really reviewed, and it's, it's hard, you know, I've, I've had employees, and you've probably been responsible for a lot more employee hiring in your life than me, but it's hard to tell what you're looking at just by looking on a piece of paper. They're very impressive. Everybody who submitted is very impressive, very capable, I suppose, but I don't know if we should ask Mr. Carrati, or just go through it one at a time and see, does it make a difference, the sex, or the race, or the age, or anything like that? Is that not appropriate to even bring up, or?
No.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. The only thing you could talk about in recruiting are things that wouldn't involve personal information. You know, you can't talk about
Religion.
Race, color, religion.
Okay, okay.
Age, sex.
One of the things that we may want to start with
Sexual preference, any of that stuff.
One of the things that we may want to start with for an interim, which is up to six months, is what qualifications would we look for to immediately come in? And you may have some of these in mind, like one of my qualifications would be, and I don't mean to taint it, is some sort of CRA experience, because I know that we have a CRA, it would be nice to have someone familiar. I'm not sure, other things that you'd be looking for? What would you be, past experience as a city manager, maybe, or?
I'd say, one of my going in positions was, and I think I said this last meeting, you know, not to have a political tie to either quote side or quote the city. I think that's
Okay.
To me, that's number one.
And I only see one, maybe one
Yeah, no, I'm partially with this group, by the way.
Even in close to this area, I think.
Yeah, there's only one. But what would you like, you know, and that's one of the things, and I know that we do this on a spur of the moment, because we haven't, well, one, we've never been here in 27 years. We're breaking new ground as a council. So is there anything that you would, you know, as far as money goes, I think that's negotiable. People have put in what they're looking for.
Some did, and some didn't.
I know. So maybe, and that was a, it was a request, that may be a term limiter that didn't answer that part of the mail.
I know, I was amazed by the difference.
Yeah. I mean, we've got from $8,500 plus plus to $10,000, if nothing else, to $61 an hour, to just different things. Lloyd, any, any comment on what you'd be looking for, or just?
Again, I'd like someone who has experience working with different levels of budget challenges. In other words, a small budget is much more difficult to manage than a large budget. Okay? So, you know, somebody who, who may come in here from, you know, a city with an $850 million a year budget, may find themselves pretty challenged to deal with, with an $8 million budget. So I would say that I would like to see some evidence that a person has managed a small community and a small community's budget in the past with some measure of success.
How about prior city manager or assistant city manager experience? Yes or no?
It's not high on my list.
It's not high in it?
Okay. Organizational experience is not on my list.
Organizational, and it could be any type of organizational.
Right, right.
But I would like
Preferably operational organizational experience.
Now, the ICMA, Mike, can you tell me about the ICMA? Some people are ICMA certified, and that is your?
There, there's a certification through ICMA. It's called a credential manager, and after their names, they can put ICMA dash CM. This is an individual that has sat for a test, 13 components. They are graded on those 13 components, and they have to develop a professional work plan based upon the results of those, those tests. For example, in Brevard County, two of the managers have the credential manager certification. Florida has a very, very high percentage in that program. There's only one state that has more credential managers, and I believe that's North Carolina. It's been a higher priority of the professional managers in Florida to do that. And then there's annual reporting requirements, updating your, your training plan, and it's a very, it's not an intense program, but a very rewarding professional program. The big challenge is sitting for the 13 sections.
But I'd say, what struck out to me was, were those that had both real world experience with operational organizations and high level of education, like MPAs and that sort of thing.
How about their, their work, actually working in the last year? Or some people have not, the work history, some people have, have not worked in several years. I don't know if that's a
I guess you could tell what they were doing in that several years.
Yeah, okay.
You know, if they're at state prison, perhaps that's not even
On the wrong side of the, I didn't see that. I didn't see that. How much time, what would you like to do?
I would kind of like to go through each one, even just for a minute or two, and just kind of get some input. You know, we talked about it, is CRA, we could say, okay, this person does or does not have CRA experience, and just to kind of get a little bit of a feel.
These applications in front of us have, are in an order, not alphabetical, but on the date the application was returned, so which is, which is fair, also starting with 6/7/2012 to 6/12, which is this afternoon, before noon.
One more input that I had is at least a working knowledge of Satellite Beach issue. I mean, not, not necessarily in depth, but so they're not coming in completely cold.
Okay.
For example, there was that one, and I forget who it was, we'll go back through as we're going through, but I think it was a gal, said that she had been in and reading all of the transparent
The cases, online or something, yeah.
And blah, blah, blah. That was, that's cool.
A little above and beyond. All right. So with that in mind, and we don't have to, you know, we can save the ranking. The first person that we see, and the first one is Wayne Bowers from Greenville, North Carolina. And anybody can, can add comments.
Doesn't look like any CRA experience. You mentioned that. Tons of experience, and he's written some books and things like that. That's pretty impressive.
Scott Wayne does, in his cover letter, though, indicate CRA, and he was city manager in Jacksonville Beach, and he had one of the first CRAs, according to his cover letter. I don't, I'm not sure it's on his resume, but
It's one of the first downtown redevelopment districts.
Okay. He said, I would anticipate compensation of approximately $10,000 per month in the use of a city vehicle or an auto allowance.
That got my attention.
But that's
Okay, we want to, I mean, I don't know.
I'd like to find somebody who wants to come work here because they want to come work, or not because they want a city vehicle and, and $10,000 a month.
I understand. Okay.
Again, this is one of those people that, you know, $101 million operating budget, 700 and something employees, and again, the
He does, he does look good on, on paper. There is some extra cost, but like you say, he's
But again, he's
Big time manager.
Exactly.
Okay. John Metzepoulos from Sandburg, city manager for the town of Fairfield, Connecticut.
Redevelopment experience?
Mm-hmm. The only thing I saw on John, and I don't mean to influence, but I do want to contribute in this too, is community redevelopment agency. I don't see anything much more than that.
And also lack of Satellite Beach situational awareness at least.
And as far as educational experience, I don't know if we were looking for an MPA or what we're looking for, but not, I wasn't shocked with the education, although
Now you get stores, bachelor of arts and science.
Again, we're not hiring a brand new college graduate here.
Correct.
All right. But I guess I would have expected to see a little bit more professional development in the, in the resume.
So that's two that we have to solve. James F. Coleman, and Mr. Coleman is
Lady Lake.
Okay. Where is Lady Lake?
That's it? Yeah, that is.
Here.
Panhandle.
Like Mary.
Okay, by the, by the lake, by maybe the
Villages.
The villages?
Yeah.
Probably in the middle.
Central core area.
Relevant experience, DHS FEMA.
The whole federal government thing has, gives me the
I know. I think you city manager and airport manager at the city of Williston, Florida. I've been almost there. You're the, you're the airport manager in charge of school transportation. That's kind of combined population 2,000 type.
Just not a lot of relevant.
Okay. The next is a Mr. Robert of Bartolata, and he writes a cover letter, and he is also, most recently, a city manager. His last position was as a city manager of Sarasota, Florida, for the last five years, and then left by mutual agreement.
Hello.
Hello.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll just wait, we'll just wait one minute.
Yeah, I do. I'm gonna have to look at it.
Okay. We'll just wait one minute.
We're kind of going through these, just briefly looking at where number four. Through here, number four, just kind of looking at their resume and getting a little input.
I think it's done.
I think this next page over, maybe, says a cover letter.
All right, as Cheryl looks, he's over, we can discuss, and then we'll give her a chance. Robert Bartolata.
I think I'd like to talk to him.
I'd like education, the experience isn't over the top. It's more relatively sized.
But it's in, I think it's in the ballpark.
CRA experience.
He sounds nice on paper. He really does. And 35 years municipal management. Does not, does not come up with a compensation package, but discusses it, that he has thought about it and will discuss it. So it wasn't something that was overlooked.
It'd be interesting to know, I don't know if we can know, but
Well, he said he resigned his position by mutual agreement with the city commission. It sounds
Like they wanted
Somebody new.
Yeah.
It could be a question, I mean, it would be
But, but that could also be a factor of, I mean, that's, I mean, Mike has said, that's kind of why, I mean, we've discussed, that's why he's retiring, but that's one thing. It's quite another thing to be let go for a reason and still say it.
Well, again, now that he's brought the information forward in his letter, you can ask him a question. Or very legitimate to ask.
Right.
Yes. You can't, typically, you can't ask a person why they
I got it, I got it. Okay.
Unless they
But most city managers aren't very forthcoming, because it's not unusual to be terminated as a city manager, like a baseball manager every four, seven years. And, you know, if you've had a number of jobs, there's going to be those issues in your past, and those are legitimate questions. And you learn a lot on how a person answers that also.
Yeah. There were things in here, you know, where he talked about under utilities management, maintain competitive water and sewer rates while increasing capital infrastructure accounts. That tells me that he raised those things high enough, just enough so it didn't break the bank, but
Yep. And he does have
Apparently accounts on.
CRA experience, and, okay. Let's go on to, we are going to do Steve Cottrell. And Steve Cottrell is, he's the town manager, or was, from Windsor, Vermont, up until August 2011.
Lots of letters that's for
Yes. And the town manager of Bel Air.
Florida?
Yeah. Bel Air, Bel Air, Florida.
Can I hold you there?
Till '06.
'97.
'97 to '06.
I need to go to the last department.
I did call, my sister, who was Indian Rock Beach, was not familiar with, she just left in 2007, so was not familiar with Steve Cottrell. I, I don't know, I just read, if you have letters from '89, there's a lot of stuff here.
Yeah. Any good letters?
I don't think, to me, it's almost too much. It's almost too much.
You know, more current. I think currency is
I'm looking for a letter of recommendation for 1989.
That's a whole lifetime ago.
He did have, in Windsor, though, hired new police and fire chiefs, so capital budgets.
Let's see what the size of that town was, the budget and everything.
See that?
Yeah.
Is it?
Windsor.
You know, I see a lot of sub-numbers, but I
Yeah, Bel Air, they break it down. He has a narrative of each of his positions, as you get organized in his package. Annual budget between six and seven million for Bel Air.
Let's go on, because there are some others that we might, you know. Put a clip on. The next is Mr. Howard D. Tipton. Father?
Father of the current
Current county manager.
Of Orange County?
I'm here.
Howard, you work for Orange County in the clerk of the court's office, Howard.
Anything on Mr. Tipton?
Found it interesting we had an employment agreement included.
What I don't see is the education. Well, let's, again, this is one of, it's not a CV, and it's not a resume, it's a biographical sketch. So, I mean, there is some, you see no CRA efforts on here.
I mean, that stick out anyway.
Yeah.
What's the range rider?
Range riders affiliated with the Florida City County Management Association and ICMA. They're typically retired managers who stay active in the profession, will assist communities in recruiting managers, reviewing resumes, or also be available to truck troubleshoot issues in communities at the request of managers or the councils. They, they're basically seasoned professionals that make their skills available at no compensation to back to the profession.
I like the gray there, too, there for
They wear cowboy hats, I think, I've seen one cowboy hat that we know.
Nothing, nothing really pops out at the end of this one.
I don't see any work relationship from 19, since 1999, any, any, any work. Is that? Cheryl, you're catching up.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right. The next is Ann Samuelson, Satellite Beach, unincorporated resident. Anything on, on Ann?
Ann certainly brings the situational awareness of what's going on without actually having been part of it. So she wouldn't be marred by the politics one way or the other. She hasn't been an actual city manager, but she seems to have both private and public sector experience.
And the city's done some things with her, I guess, as the spraw leader, like the drainage project and stuff, I think we worked a little bit with her on that and some other projects.
Is that true?
Well, she's a partner on a number of projects, including the Scorpion Court drainage situation, working with the spraw, the county and the city, and then also the water drainage project.
Is there a She's like the other one, I think she
She said it's discussed.
It was, okay, negotiable.
What about conflict of interest? Is there a conflict of interest with this here? I don't think there is, but I would just want to make sure. With her real estate business, is that, could that be?
I don't believe she owns any property in the city.
Okay.
I'm almost certain she does not.
But she's going to have to disclose that. You have to do a financial disclosure
Correct.
She knows that, yes.
Okay.
She's worth looking at.
Only thing I see is that, I don't see anything about CRA in here, but again, I don't think that worrying about CRAs is all that difficult.
Well, we may, so maybe he doesn't.
Yeah. Well, or you could always, yeah, I think we, yeah. I'd say
Bring her in. She has done work, however, I think, that, that, that has been affected by the CRA. Like she's got the landscaping work.
She definitely has business, you know, business experience, organizational skills.
Thanks for saying that.
Okay. I have two people so far, Bartolata, Samuelson, I wish I were old. The next is Mr. Kenneth Fields.
Washburner.
Oh.
No, Washburner, recommendation letter.
It's a letter
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kenneth Fields, who is, well, town administrator, most recently Southwest Ranches, village manager, Isle Marota, executive administrative officer, Seminole Tribe.
That's interesting.
City manager, and yes.
He's worked with Richard before on CRA, so I didn't know that.
Well, you know, he's got the Hollywood
I noticed some employment gap between the Seminole Tribe executive administrative officer position and the village manager for Isle Marota.
And his one year, or maybe even less than a year, for all we know, at Southwest Ranches.
Do you know if he's, if this, 2012 was when he left, or is he, is this like, he put 2012 in there as
He has left
Probably.
And it briefly addresses it in his letter. I spoke to him at the manager's conference about it, and I'm aware of it. Mr. Fields and I have a very, very good friend in common, so I've done some social things with him over the years.
And he comes in with 10 grand a month.
Yeah, we know what the benefits are.
Was that, was that the 10 grand a month? Was that, we got an hourly rate? In lines with what?
Around $60 a month.
Okay. That's kind of in line with what we currently
I was, I, I've been, I know Hollywood, I know the CRA, just like when Richard was here last week also, those places look nice. I'm not sure, I, with Southwest Ranches, I'm not sure how big, or even where Southwest Ranches is. I don't know if it's by Marco Island, or
I thought it was up by Weston.
Up by Weston?
Westport, Lauderdale.
Westport, Lauderdale?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Isle Marota? I would be
What, what other benefits would be legally required? Says 10 grand, except those legally required.
If you set it up on a contractual basis, probably none. Now, if you put them up as a temporary a temporary part, or temporary employee, you know, there's the workers' compensation, but you, you have the option of structuring it as, as a contractor to the city, and it would just be a flat monthly payment like you, you pay, uh, for any other type of contract that you have.
And they would pay their own taxes.
Pay their own taxes, and they, you know, their own cellphone and...
Is that, is that a ten ninety-nine, or would W two, ten ninety-nine?
Certainly, it's the easiest way to approach it.
Okay, so that'd be a hundred and twenty grand a, a year, and divided by what in F T, twenty days? So, yeah, so it's sixty.
That is sixty.
That's, that's competitive. Well, I, I like, I, I would, uh... Put them down as a possible? Because we'd have it. Let's continue. Kathleen Margolis. And she is most recently being assistant city manager to the city of Lake Worth.
Again, I like, actually, and just like Mr. Fields, both Ms. Margolis and Mr. Fields both discuss, having gone into our website and looked over all the information specifically. Like that, like that. This, this was also a factor of, you know, city council, isn't that right, Mike?
Well, the city manager, there's a Michael Bornstein, Michael Bornstein, by the way, is, is very well known, well liked as a city manager. Wrote a letter that when he took over, he just took over Lake Worth.
This one, he let her go, right?
Yes. The, uh, he...
Yeah.
That was it. Yeah. When Michael took over Lake Worth. He went from Lantana to Lake Worth. And that was based on, he says, "I have determined that the assistant city manager position is not currently part of his vision." So, and that's... Education, did anybody find education? What do we got?
Nove, Southwest, Southeast Nova University?
Nova.
You notice that while she was the, while she was the assistant city manager for the city of Lake Worth, she was also?
Consultant.
The consultant for the town manager of Lauderdale by the Sea, and also project manager for Public Art and Design of the, in the Brevard County Cultural Division.
Broward.
I'm sorry, Broward County Cultural Division. She was holding three jobs at the same time?
Well.
I don't see any CRA.
No.
She mentioned community redevelopment.
For, indeed, yeah, for casino.
Managed casino rehabilitation and beach. I don't think that that is a casino. I think the casino was a place on the beach that they rehabilitated, but it wasn't a, a casino casino.
It's called a casino, but it's a beachfront building.
It's just a beachfront.
It's not a casino.
No.
It's just a cross from the beach. And I, I know. It, it says casino re, I thought the same thing. I went there.
They added a new name.
Had to have breakfast. I'll tell you, from, uh, Richard Bornstein in his letter, I'm not sure where she included that, or Michael Bornstein, but that's, that's a tough letter. I mean, that's... I'm here. I, I would, yeah. I don't think I would. Yep. The next is Barbara W. Lipscomb, and Barbara is professional experience, five years, city manager, city of Castleberry, and before that, assistant city manager Gainesville.
There's no cover letter, because I don't know what's happened, but, but I'm just wondering what the deal is at the end of January twenty twelve, because that's where it cuts off. Know what I mean?
Yes.
Yes, I do. She does have CRA experience. But again, nothing about Satellite Beach or...
Yeah, just.
satellite beach ideas or... I, I think they're better.
Okay. We will, uh, continue on to Michael L. Brillhart. And, uh... Michael is presently, or has been, works St., uh, St. Lucie County as the business manager for St. Lucie County. CRA experience.
Collective bargaining negotiations.
Probably not a lot of, of city manager, not that that's, but in budget, I mean, he's done some of that stuff, business manager, but...
But I find it interesting, though, in his write-up of business manager, he doesn't mention budgets. He mentions economic development, legislative matters.
I know. I think it would be, as an interim, hard, hard to get, hard to get there.
Especially what we're getting into right away. And again, no Satellite Beach discussion.
The last is, uh, Mr. Hector Rivera, and, uh, I... Relevant, two thousand and nine, to the present adjunct faculty, Palm Beach State College, and he is also a consultant for Castles and Associates, Washington, D.C. Working on progressive USA proposals on Honduras, Jamaica, Paraguay, and Uganda.
We were looking for an international affairs person.
Mr. Rivera would be.
And again, nothing, I mean, even in his cover letter to Brenda, he says nothing about Satellite Beach.
I have, uh, three people, I think we all have, Mr. Bartalota, Ann Samuelson, Ms. Ann Samuelson, Mr. Fields, and I do have a note to go back to Mr. Cutrell. And so we, we...
Can you, um, go over the, just quickly, the first three?
Yes, go ahead. Uh, the first one is Wayne Bowers. Uh, does anybody remember all the comments for Mr. Bowers?
I think Lloyd had a comment going upon.
Cheryl, I'm sorry, before we started, we looked at some criteria that we thought would be appropriate. One of the ones was, mine was CRA experience, one was budget experience. Lloyd thought small government as opposed to big government.
And that was the hit here, was this guy had big government, seven hundred and thirty employee city, hundred, you know, hundreds, over a hundred million dollar budget. Lack of, again, he doesn't say anything about Satellite Beach in, in his, uh, letter. He comes in, you know, ten thousand bucks a month plus the use of a city vehicle, so... And then for Mr. Mitsopolis, he said, uh, lack of CRA, lack of Satellite Beach discussion, lack of higher level education.
He's a city manager, I think, Mike.
And then for Mr. Coleman, I wrote down lack of relevant experience.
So, uh, let's look at Mr. Cutrell, and then we may be able to, to, uh, come up with the, our suggestions.
I'm going back and look at Mr. Cutrell's letter, but again, um, no real discussion of Satellite Beach issues. And I, in my other job, I get a little flaky when I read inputs from prospective employees, and they say, "Hey, you better get me, because somebody else is going to," which he says right there.
And he does win the W C Andrew Groom for the largest.
See, I was saying. You know, Andy's not here to defend himself, so I will.
Okay.
Hey, don't do that.
Hey, we're publicly recognizing Mr. Groom's.
All right. Let's take just a couple minutes. It looks like the council, uh, is favoring, uh, to speak with tomorrow night, uh, three people, Mr. Bartalota, Ann Samuelson, I say, Miss, Mrs. Samuelson, and Mr. Fields. Is that the consensus?
You want to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, let me open it publicly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me just see, and, uh...
Roger Goodis, Satellite Beach. Um, I remember reading an article about Sarasota. I had some ties over there in years past. Mr. Bartalota, you need to carefully look at, there are some issues there. Um, I don't know whether the allegations are true, but there is an article in the Sarasota Herald in regards to his termination.
Thank you. I plan on going and Googling these folks tonight.
Yeah. Any other, Bill? With that in mind, if we Google, would we want to have a fourth person, a, since we have three, would we want to pick another person to interview? Or, uh, we'll pay with the three?
I think we did a pretty good job.
Well, if you wanted a fourth, I still think Ms. Margolis might be who you're talking to. Marg, Margolis, I'm sorry.
What do you think?
She's the one that bragged about the K-type reports. That's one.
In my, all my positions, both in government and nonprofit finance, community development and citizen relations have been key core competencies. So, I see that as germane. Smaller, she, and she held, what, the other thing that I liked in there was I supervise public services, leisure services, and human resources. That, she, shows me just a little bit of diversity. Uh, and I'm not sure what the budget brain trust was, but she was one of three members of it. And, uh, again, we're coming up on, on budget, so those types of credentials.
That's the big, that's the big thing.
She, you know, in Lake Worth, they had to reduce the general fund budget by four and a half million dollars mid-year of last F Y. Uh, looks like she reduced herself out of the job, but, um, again, I see, I see value in that. She has grant writing and administration experience, budget development, implementation.
We're gonna be asking Mr. Bartolos about his issue. We can ask her about that letter.
Yeah.
Well, the letter is nothing more than her reason why she left her last job.
Right. No, what I'm saying is, the mayor said that that was a concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And she does mention it in one position. She says, uh, she did say, "He decided to eliminate the position as an immediate cost savings measure" in her cover letter. Possible, or would you, uh... Would you like to interview her also, and that would be four?
Well, happy in Parks and Rec. It's, it's, actually, I was just in Carl Springs and Tamarack last Friday.
Now, uh, can I ask you, Cheryl, Lauderdale by the Sea, was that the I G G report, Lauderdale by the Sea?
Lauderdale Lakes.
Lauderdale Lakes. Okay. I couldn't, I, there's a few.
Actually, it says Lauderdale by Lakes here. She was the Parks and Rec director, City of Lauderdale Lakes, August two thousand five, August two thousand nine.
We're not sure if she... Maybe a good, maybe we'll have to see. Worth discussing.
Two men and two ladies.
Uh, all right. You, Mike, we have, uh, well, let's make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that the city council invites Mr. Robert Bartolata, Mrs. Ann Samuelson, Mr. Kenneth Fields, and Ms. Kathleen Margolis to interview for the interim city manager job tomorrow evening.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Billman, second by Councilman French. Any other discussion?
Councilman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis? Yes. Councilman French?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is unanimous, Lee. Uh, number four is other issues relating to city manager transition. Uh, I would like to ask the council tomorrow evening, is all, do we want to have, how do we want to do this? Set questions, us to come up with one candidate, and then public opinion, public opinion on each candidate? We would interview for ten to fifteen minutes privately. I mean, we would have the public here, but each individual, I think, would have to stay outside. Do we want to ask the same questions?
Yes, you have to.
Yeah.
You have to.
Yeah, you do.
How many questions?
I'd say one a piece. I'd say one a piece.
Why do you have to ask the ten questions?
That's part of the hiring process.
Human, yeah.
Yeah.
Human relation.
H R requirement.
H R laws. You have to ask the same question. And I would suggest that each one of us have one question, and we ask the same question, and, and be careful to ask it the same way.
Okay. Just one question?
Well.
Per person, five, they get five. They get ten minutes.
Yeah.
Basically, they'll come in, typically, the first question, everybody knows the answer to, "Tell us a little bit about yourself."
So, so that would not be even a question?
That would, typically, it would be the same question you ask every, every one.
Okay.
And then, it's essentially an icebreaker, and then, um, and then, I would, I would say no more than three questions if you're only gonna have fifteen minutes. All right?
I'm only going ten.
We, we, do we want to do ten or fifteen?
Fifteen, fifteen, I make it an hour for four people.
So, what do you think? Fifteen? Okay, at the most. Okay, fifteen minutes?
Yeah. And we should let, let them know that they only have fifteen minutes.
Yes, I will, I will do that. I'll set this, and I'll ask them to introduce themselves. And then, I think, Lloyd, I'll go to you, and then Greg, and then Cheryl, and then Vice Mayor, and then Vice.
Actually, you could, you could lead this. You could ask the questions, and we could just sit here and listen. I think that would be perfectly fine with me.
You want to give me the questions?
Sure.
Okay.
What, I'll tell you, how about this? How about if we, if we each take a question of substance? In other words, like, maybe you take a CRA question, you take a, a budget question, you know, I'll take a, uh, an H R question, and Lloyd takes a.
Scientific question.
Yes.
I would take something on, yes.
Yeah, and then we, we send you that question.
And I'll ask them in the same order, the same time, and I can ask that, that question. Okay. So, now, do we want to have discussion afterwards, or just want to listen to the question, or just want to say, "Thank you for coming," and we will get back to you?
So, how do you get to some of these questions where, about their termination, or why they resigned from their position?
That would be in the, "Tell us a little about yourself" discussion. Or if they don't bring that up, then we want to know. Well, I think if they don't bring it up, that's a, that's, I mean, they're saying something right there.
That doesn't make sense to me, because I wouldn't answer the question unless you asked me the question.
That's true.
But how do you know that it's true? I mean, you could Google, maybe you could hear about the bump down in town Marlin, I thought, and that's not true. You can call them.
It may, uh, any, any...
How about, how about a generic question about, "Tell us about your last job?" How about a generic question like that? And that'll, that'll lead them to...
And you can even expand it, "Why are you interested in leaving it, or why did you leave it?"
Okay, I can ask that one. And that would be the, the, the break. And then each one of you could give me a question.
Why don't we go over those questions now, so we're all?
That's a good idea.
Well, is it, we're not on tape.
Here we are.
So, somebody could look it up tonight?
Well, we won't, we, we won't post it till after tomorrow night.
And the newspaper won't report the question.
I just want the names in.
Yeah, there's names, so it's.
Okay, so, so would that be, because we'd like to, we'd like to discuss a typical, uh, do you feel comfortable asking a CRA question?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what's your forte? You know what, I like your, I like you always talk about militaries, budgets, uh, with the budget season coming, you always, you're very big on it, on.
I'll ask military budget rate type question without coming, uh, budget cycle coming or.
I, I mean, I, I mean, I don't need to, but I know you, you are big on that, reducing the. And I'd like to ask a question on efficient government. Please, please give us your views in the next three minutes. On the, I'd say on the relationship between efficiency and city government.
Exactly.
Okay.
If I could just interject, they were instructed to read the KPEG report and the Levels of Service report. I've heard the frustration from council that they didn't personalize it for Satellite Beach. When I contact them this evening, I will, if you would like, I could reinforce to them to review those two reports, or not, you tell me.
I, I'd like them to take that upon themselves. I'd like to see that in initiative on their own part.
Because they were interested and personalized, they clearly came to the top.
Yes.
And, I mean, we made it easy for them.
Well. Relationship with efficiency.
For turn around, council. I think that an open-ended, we want to make sure that these are open-ended questions.
Yes, yes, not, not.
For example, what do you foresee the challenges you'll face, uh, over the next few months during the, the budgeting process?
Okay. Greg? Yes. Where do you want to concentrate your question, Lloyd? Was that your question?
Because. Well, it was a question, I mean, I didn't claim.
We're gonna do budget here.
Thought it was a great one. Did you just copy that down to turn in?
Actually, Scott liked that, and that's his question, so you have to come up with another one.
A science question.
Because he had.
A science question. Like, what is the airspeed velocity when I'd lay in swallow?
Right. You know what? Ask them to explain the bell curve, because you always tell me about the. No. Forget it. You can come up tomorrow, Cheryl, you got till tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, let's not, now, the other thing is, what I'd like to know, and I really, because, because tomorrow night's gonna, when do we want to select one person ourselves and then open it for public comment, or do we want to open it up for public comment and have the people discuss each four?
I think, I think the public should sit here like, like we do.
They will.
Interview all, as we interview all the, the candidates, the public absorbs the same information we do, then, then, after all the candidates are gone, then we have public comment and.
But before we make a decision.
Right. So, have public comment before we make a decision.
Correct. But after all of them have discussed.
After all of them have been interviewed. That, that gives the public the best.
You made a face, you don't, I don't know if you like that.
Well, you remember, this is an appointment, not an interview, and, um.
I mean, we can do it without any public comment. But in.
I'm just afraid, given the, the hostility of the last council meeting, that.
I will try, I, I don't think that, personally, I don't think that's gonna happen tomorrow night, it may happen next Wednesday, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
I just think it's unfair for an interview to have to deal with that if it does.
Well, they wouldn't be here in the room during the public comment, would they? They would, they would depart.
Well, they could be here, because they're already done.
But if you instruct that most applicants will leave, and, and we'll have refreshments over in the other area, because I think you want the person you select to give it to your city attorney immediately following the selection, so that when you then get that formal arrangement completed.
Because that, this will be.
Well, I think one of, oh, let's back up, though, I think one of the things we, and the reason why we're doing this process is to iron out this speed, so that needs to be one of the questions, we need to, the reason why we ended up here doing this interview process is because we wanted a flat rate fee.
That should be Lloyd's question.
Okay, it needs to be very specific, you need to leave tomorrow with a fee.
What is your.
And what the cost.
What are your salary and, and benefits expectations?
That's the main reason why we, why we did it, are going through this process.
Well, you're giving everybody else questions.
I don't have a question.
Okay, but let's go back to the discussion of public comment. Yes, I mean, we owe, we do it, I don't know, it is very, very tricky to do it, but we, we.
I think if we do it, you just have to be very specific that the public comment has to be, has to be directed towards.
The applicant.
The applicants.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that should, well, I, I don't see that not happening. I mean, like I say, I, I think it's only gonna be, we're here to select an interim, you, you can help us in that process while you're in court. We're not gonna.
All right, so.
Just credit anybody for anything.
One more, I think that, that will be my question.
To the applicant, because the same question has to be.
What are your salary and benefits expectations during your tenure as an interim City Manager?
We also want to know when they'll be able to start. I could ask for that, maybe, because they have to be able to start.
It could be the last question you ask, I mean, as they're.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what if a, a citizen asks a question of them?
Uh, we, 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 actually, citi- citizen comments are always directed towards us, and then I, I can decide whether we should put that forward or just put it down.
And then we'll begin to ask every applicant that question?
You have to, which would make it untenable.
We, we are just soliciting, it's not quite, you know, just, just.
Now, will there be comments that, as to, I mean, this was put out there on the website, right? Our, our packet was out on the website?
Yes.
So, citizens already had an opportunity to look over the, the applicants. So, is it possible that they'll come back and, and say, well, how can you unpick Mary or John?
We can tell them, we had a meeting last night, solicited comments on each applicant, public comment, and, in order for, uh, conciseness, and we have narrowed it down. It was always, it was advertised as a special meeting to do that.
Right, yeah. I think if the mayor says, hey, this is gonna be about these applicants that we've discussed here, and leave it at that.
I think that's the best way. You okay with that? Or, I, I will play the public comment, but, you know, we're gonna have to discuss the four people that have interviewed. And then we will leave here tomorrow night with an interim.
With a decision.
And I think that's in accordance, getting back to the citizen's comments, I think what you just said is exactly in accordance with the chart, which is that a special meeting, public comments are to be restricted to just that.
Correct, only the agenda. And, and do we have an agenda for tomorrow? Is it only gonna be to select interim City Manager, just one item?
The second reading of the ordinance on the referendum with the revised language that Greg submitted.
Okay, that's, that's because we didn't.
Charter.
Okay, because it was valid. What time do we do that?
Six o'clock, that, I mean, it's, it's the simple language that was approved at, not the last meeting, but the previous.
10:55?
Yeah, it'll take two minutes.
And Jim and I discuss it, and it's perfect.
It's understandable and.
Sure.
The only other issue is, uh, this always comes up, can the interim apply for the permanent job? Is that a yes or no, or does it not matter?
Well, I, I'm preferring not, that's, I, I think the point was to get an interim that was gonna take us out on this search, initially, why to bring in the best candidate possible, I don't know what your other thoughts are, but typically, that's what you do with an interim, because you got these, whatever they write, for, what are they called, something Rangers, and that's what they do for a living, they just hop around.
Tremendous head-hunting organization.
Yeah.
I would prefer not, but what I don't want to keep us from doing is if we find a real good one, and, and that person works out, that we say, sorry, you can't do it because you were the interim. I see what you're saying, I prefer that they not, but if we get a good one, I don't want to lose that good one.
Or make the decision now, you can make it, you know, if the person would apply, then you can say, you want to consider that interview or not? You know, some cities, though, do say.
So, it's, it would have to apply for them.
Oh, they would, and that'd be the, that'd be the other thing, they would still have to go through the process. It's ultimately up to the council, you know, the Ken Smalls always has things on there about City Managers, Pointon Beach, I think, they, uh, they appointed the, uh, Assistant City Manager to take over, and they did a big search and spent tens of thousands of dollars and stuff, and I think ultimately came back with the Assistant City Manager to appoint, then to stay as.
Kind of like W's V2. I think Jacob Errol did that, too.
I know it's not, you know, I'm not sure how much peril we would be in, but what if a person comes in here and starts as the interim, and all of a sudden, next month, they get an offer as a permanent City Manager somewhere else, and then they leave us in the lurch? Are we gonna be doing this all over again, or will there be some sort of a commitment required from these folks for, uh, a period of time? I, I'm just, perhaps I'm just paranoid.
Or what if it just doesn't work out, you know, with the way we think it will, the personality mix or whatever, and then.
You're at will, right?
We want to.
We are at will, and you put that in your agreement, right, Betty?
We had to dismiss them, and we had to appoint somebody else.
Because if you're at will, and it'd be in the agreement that.
There's actually two classifications, you're looking at retired City Managers that are interested in taking up three to five, six months' work, they probably will most likely complete their, their assignments, but there are those who are legitimately in transition who would desire permanent employment, you do run risk that, you know, work in three or four months and a nice job offer comes along, they could leave, so you may want to discuss that as, under the.
I would think at least till, uh, 30 September, because that is end of fiscal year.
May, may we put that in the question? When can you start, and would you be committed to us till the end of September?
Yeah. Because that's fiscal year.
I even want it a little bit longer, it's, it's a process to put together, maybe October.
Middle of October, Mike, you think, or, or end of October?
Mine is just the 180 days.
Yeah.
I want to say that. I should credit you, November 12th or 13th.
After elections.
After.
We'll just put 180 days, because that's charter.
Yeah.
All right, hey, thank you, uh, everyone for coming. I think, uh, so, homework assignment? Yeah, you've done yours, uh, you guys haven't done yours.
Email it to you?
Question, don't email, just bring it to me. That'd be fine. All right, thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, guys.